All right, since there's not an official clock in here, we'll use my wristwatch and call it seven o'clock. And welcome to this November thirteenth session of the Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the O'Conne Board of Commissioners. Decisions made here tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the O'Conne BOC for final action. Tonight's agenda, sign up sheets were out back. I've got most of them here. If you forgot to get a sign up sheet, there's still an opportunity. You'll have to just get my attention later on. The way we do things here, the O'Conne Planning Department staff will present each report and recommendations for each request. There'll be a public inputs session. We'll start with the petitioner's representative or the petitioner. We'll follow that with people that would like to speak in favor of the project. And we'll try to limit that to about 20 minutes total. And we'll open it up to those that want to speak in opposition of the request. And we'll try to limit that to 20 minutes. The petitioner will have a chance if we've got some time left to answer questions that might have been arisen. After that period, I'll close the public input and that will bring it up here to the table. These gentlemen will get to ask their questions of the staff or the petitioner. Until we get to a place where I can get a motion from them and then we'll vote. For the benefit of those present and watching online, all comments should be made when you get up to the podium. When you get up there, please give your name and your address. Direct your comments to us up here at the front. We won't be able to answer your questions right away, but we might bring them up in the discussion and try to get you an answer. If there are multiple speakers, to avoid repeating everything that the others, you can say ditto and point out some other concerns or favorable aspects of the project. And we ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting, put in their seats on any of the speakers. And with that, I will ask my commissioners, you've had a chance, I hope to see the minutes from last meeting. Are there any corrections or comments to be made on the minutes? I don't see anybody reaching for their pens, so I'll ask if they're motion. Motion to approve or motion to correct, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes be accepted as presented, please.
Yeah, Jim has done a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is that Nathan? Okay. Voice got there, head of bikes hand. All right, so all of you, please raise your right hand. Minutes are approved unanimously and we'll move on. So I will ask Mr. Herring to come up, give us the first application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, your first item is rezoned P twenty-three zero-two-zero-four and special use P twenty-three zero-two-zero-three. This is Parkside Property Development LLC and Athens Construction Group Property Holdings LLC. It's parcels B zero-five zero-zero-five A and a portion of parcel B zero-five H zero-zero-one F. They are zoned AG and R two in the suburban neighborhood character area. This is special use P twenty-three zero-two-zero-three, same owners showing a portion of the two parcels as well. And again, in the AG and R two zoning categories in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request is rezone the property from AG and R two M P D to B two in order to develop a commercial subdivision plan to include small scale buildings that provide shops, cafes, services and self-storage facilities. The applicant is requesting a special use approval to construct a self-storage facility under the proposed B two zoning in the portion shown on the previous slide. This is a principal use mini warehouses and self-storage units that is allowed by special use approval in the B two zoning district according to section two oh five ten E. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets showing the full development with the self-storage located to the north there. Slightly larger version with an inset, and this is in the special use concept plan of the location of the proposed self-storage. These are the representative photos in the application packet. And staff recommends conditional approval subject to the following conditions. One, two, and three are our standard conditions. Number four, the proposed park connector road connecting duly connector to O'Conne Veterans Park shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits. Number five, at the intersection of the proposed park connector road and duly connector road, the developer shall install a traffic circle, roundabout or equivalent to service the project with the final design and location of such improvement subject to review and approval by the Public Works Director. Number six, any self-storage building shall be brick and or stone veneer on all facades. And number seven, in addition to the proposed use exclusions in the narrative, the below general use categories listed in table two-point-one and two-point-two of the UDC are excluded. Number one, transient lodging. Number two, automotive repair and maintenance. Number three, other repair and maintenance services. Number four, health-related services. Number five, rental and leasing services. Number six, motor vehicle and parts dealers. Number seven, general merchandise and department stores. Number eight, outdoor display areas. Number nine, outdoor storage areas. Special use staff recommendation is conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, a fifty-foot wide landscape buffer augmented with additional evergreen screening shall be provided between the proposed self-storage use and O'Conne Veterans Park to provide an opaque year-round vegetative screening to limit the visual impact of structures on the park. Any required evergreen screening plants shall be six foot tall at the time of planting. Number five, all self-storage buildings shall be brick and or stone veneer on all facades. Number six, the proposed park connector road connecting duly connector to O'Conne Veterans Park shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits. And number seven, at the intersection of the proposed park connector road and duly connector road, the developer shall install a traffic circle, roundabout or equivalent to service the project with a final design and location of such improvement subject to review and approval by the Public Works Director. You will need to vote on the two separately, but the public comment can be taken together. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll ask the applicants representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay? My name is Abe Abu Hamdan. I'm an engineer, principal engineer with AVE Consulting. My address is at twenty-four-ten Hog Mountain Road, Watkinsville, Georgia. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Appreciate, good to see you all, commissioners. It's been a while. This is my first meeting in this great facility and I'm seeing good vibe in here. It's a great acoustics and visuals. So Mr. Herring has covered the proposal to an extent that is really good in terms of all the zoning and whatnot and request. And what I wanted to make sure I cover with you, if we can put back the site plan, Mr. Herring, I appreciate it. So we have a, we have a sliver that is this piece of land that we're talking about. And if you look on this side, there's an R two M P D and that's a commercial zone. It's about fifty acres in here. And on this side, of course, we have the O V P, the park, the county park. Very busy park, lots of lights, lots of traffic, lots of noise. So really what we wanted to do here is what would be a good use for this between an R two M P D commercial zone property and a very busy park. And we really worked with the staff, looked at it, and a big box retail or commercial really didn't fit this area. We just did not see that would be a good location. We wanted to look more into a smaller, more manageable, small building, small retail, small, you know, cafes. So bookstore perhaps, a place where you can get a cappuccino, a sandwich, you can get a T-shirt, pair of sneakers. We wanted to cater to the park as well as the area, I mean, the community. But if you look here, all these buildings, they range from five thousand to sixty-two hundred square feet apiece. So in all but this here, this lot two, these are the ranges of the buildings. We're talking about five thousand, which is about the size of a home in O'Conne County. You know, so a newly built home, of course, there. So what we're looking for is more smaller, smaller scale, one to two story. Really leave a lot of green space, get some connectivity, pedestrian connectivity, you know, connect to the county trail system, but also be able to have something that works with this area. So if you look at all of these lots combined, we have sixty-six thousand square foot total on twelve lots. On twenty-four acres, some folks will put tremendous amount. One, one retail center, one general business will be bigger than that. And you could do multiple here, but that's not what we're aiming for. We're aiming for something that transitions from a higher commercial node to a park and really effectively try to make that impact a lot less than it would be. So with that design, with two frontages, really, if you have, if you look at it, we have the central parking system. So the views, you're not looking at a parking lot from outside, all on the internal. If you look at the development, all, you know, access from inside the development with a traffic circle, roundabout that we placed here, and it's a general size because we had to be able to accommodate the traffic from the park and then to the duly connector. So this is another element that was important. We wanted to improve some circulation. So we wanted the ability to have folks come through the development and get out to fifty-three or go back down to, you know, up towards Mars Hill. So hence this connector road, we call it park connector road. Now, of course, the owners will build that, construct it, dedicate it to the county, to their standard design. You know, and that would be, of course, done at the time of construction plans. But this is such an important factor in this request because there is a circulation problem at the park. We wanted traffic to come through and visit us as well as be able to get out to fifty-three or to Mars Hill. So it, and as far as, you know, the, the quality we want to do here, you could see by eliminating quite a bit of uses that would be considered perhaps more impacting or, you know, we wanted to do something on a small scale. But also, you know, the use that could be construed as more impacting, we have taken a good bit out of that. And I believe the, the planning staff has recommended a few more with a condition, a list of them to be added to that exclusion list. And we don't have a problem with that because we're not aiming for somebody to put outdoor storage next to a nice restaurant or cafe or, or sports shop or an ice cream parlor. So we wanted really more of a small-scale, clean, inviting cater to, to the park as well as the community. But in the same time, the ability to make that, that project work, you know, can't take everything out, then you're not able to really make a successful project. So connectivity, we've got pedestrian connectivity, there's a ten-foot multi-use path that would connect to the county trail system and fast and will run through the development all the way to the connector, duly connector. Of course, we got internal sidewalks and walkways connecting to that part as well. You could see from the architectural standards, you know, it was important to us that the feel and the look is still on a small scale, but quality. And that's what we're aiming for as well. In terms of so folks, as far as the special user really is under B two, but you have to go through a special use request to put, you know, self-storage facility. And that's what really we wanted to do here. We kind of hit it in the back corner with good evergreen buffer planting, we wanted to put along the roadway. The buildings at the front here would be two-story and there'll be climate control. Everything else will be one-story and it will be also all-sided brick. So I know that was a recommendation by the planning staff as well, and, and we do have no problem with that. Again, we're looking for quality and quantity being less, but on, on the smaller scale. And that's, so on this here, we have provided a fifty-foot buffer. And I believe the staff added some more about the opaque or the evergreen, you know, trees or planting along the park for the special use. And, and we are in agreement with that. We already have shown the fifty-foot buffer. But in addition to that, we will go in, you know, add, augment that, that existing vegetation with evergreen and opaque planting. I think one of the conditions also discussed this connection or intersection right here. And we will work with the staff to see if there's a possibility to put a roundabout or traffic circle at that location. Of course, we got four lanes, two lanes each side of that roadway. And we wanted to make sure we have the adequate space, the adequate clearances. And if that didn't be worked out, of course, we're, we're for it. If not, we will be looking at an alternate way of addressing the traffic. And of course, in accordance with Public Works and the county standards. So I really believe this is, this is what we can do here with, with looking at about fifty percent coverage on this lot. So you could tell when you look at a each lot and we have this much and this very little here alley to service these. And that's something we wanted to do better is to get the dumpster out of the track, out of the parking lot, get it out of sight. Put it closer to the building, shield it, plant around it and, and put a, you know, dumpster enclosure as well that goes along with the architectural of the building. So it's not when you even drive through the parking lot, it's attractive. Of course, we got green centers in here. Some of that would be used for storm water, water quality. We got detention facilities down here and all that will be in accordance with the county standards and regulations. And Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to answer any question.
Thank you very much. All right, so I have the two sign up sheets. I don't have anybody else besides Abe to speak in favor of the project. So if you want to speak in favor, I'll call you up at this time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Jay Salton. I live at eleven-eighty-one Klopelter Road, just off of Hog Mountain. I do note that this is a rezone going from residential to, and the existing land, the future development map character or designation is suburban neighborhood. But, and I think anytime we're rezoning residential or commercial, we ought to just take a hard breath. That scares me. In this case, I think it makes sense. My understanding, certainly not an expert, is that they're already zoned to put a thousand houses in the subdivision. Now, I could be wrong about that number. If I am, I hope somebody will correct me. But when, and they don't need any new zoning for that. That's already on the books. Trading off some of that residential development for commercial sounds like a really good idea to me. And said differently, if we're going to move a thousand families into that piece of land, they're going to need commercial, they're going to need retail. So I think some retail development, commercial development in this part of the county, as much as I don't like it, I think it's inevitable. But that's why I'm in favor of it. I do completely agree with the recommendation that there should be a circle on duly connector. I think trying to just simply have people line up for a left-hand turn there is catastrophic. And you're eventually going to have to put a stoplight there if you don't put a circle in. So putting the circle in now and making sure that the developer pays for it, I think is an absolutely critical step. I'm very concerned about the parking impact on the park itself. As I look at the map, I don't see a lot of room for parking, even with those relatively small buildings. Maybe they need fewer buildings, more area given of parking, I don't know. But what I do know is there are many nights that the parking in the park is just completely full. And people are having to go way, way, way down just to find a place to park. If that retail space doesn't have enough room for parking from all the families going and wanting to get a quick bite to eat or go into the convenience store, whatever ends up being in there. And they can't fit in the parking designated on this property, that parking could have spilled over into the park. And I think that's a problem. I'm also extremely concerned about the impact Hog Mountain Road. Now, I know that, again, this is a little bit inevitable. It's going to be, again, a thousand families wanting to make a left turn on a Hog Mountain Road every morning and school students out. And I think now is a great time to not only address the parking impact on the duly connector to this new development, but now is the time to address the impact of Hog Mountain Road. Simply put, we can't drop that many cars over the next five, 10 years, how long it takes to build this out onto Hog Mountain without major increases to Hog Mountain's capacity. And again, the developers who stand profit, as they should, as I'm glad they are so much from this development, ought to burden and offset that cost. My memory of these rezones, when they happened months, years ago, is that they were setting aside land for new fire department stations. They were setting aside land for a school. They were doing lots of things that I thought were absolutely the right thing to do. I think in that same spirit, expecting them to, and with this first step, because once this goes in, then they're going to say, okay, well, we built, you know, a convenience store on that corner and we can't put a circle there or something. Do it now. Make them do it now here at the beginning so that it's there and ready for all the additional development that's going to be coming onto that road. Final thing I had for y'all is just two questions. One, I don't know whether this new M R P zoning you're requesting allows for fast food restaurants. We heard the characterization of nice restaurants and cafes and stuff. What my mind sees is Burger King and McDonald's and R B's. And I just want to know if that's in fact allowed within this change that they're requesting. Thank you very much.
All right. Again, as I said, nobody else has signed up. Is there anyone else that needs to speak in favor of the project? All right, I don't see anybody rushing me. Exactly. All right. So now I'm opening it up to those that want to speak in opposition. I have Carol Elster signed up. Start with you.
Carolyn Elster, eleven-thirty Richwood Trail, Eastville Village subdivision, and the former homeowner association president. When I came, I actually lived here in eighty-five with my parents, moved away and came back in nineteen ninety-eight to purchase one of the early homes in Bogart, Eastville. At that time, I would say there was not that many major subdivisions. But since then, we've seen, you know, a lot over in that north in Bogart, Eastville area, even far back, where even having multimillion mansions coming. When I first came there, we had a terrific homeowners association. They explained to me that you cannot turn They explained to me that you cannot turn at, um, Malcolm Bridge and Race Church Road and fifty-three. It'll take your life in your hands. So I then began the Parker Creek for twenty-five years. I have been going Parker Creek pretty much all my life since I've been living here. Since then, I, uh, Publix came about. It became our shopping center that everybody in this town uses now. Also, um, my husband and I opened a business in Watkinsville, McPy Clockworks, as well as I did my exercise daily. In nineteen ninety-eight, I would turn down Parker Creek, make a left turn. In five minutes, I could take a left turn. I just did it tonight. It was almost twenty-five. I don't know what's going on. I never can, um, you know, explain this, um, county, although everybody wants to live there. And that is represented by the people that come into our shop all the time for the past, since two thousand and sixteen. Most of them are from out of state or they've moved here for their families. Um, that is my first concern is Highway, um, fifty-three. Uh, mainly because I'm actually feeling like I'm on three sixteen at Julian Drive, trying to get across, and that's where I'm coming from. Um, to see a light go in down there now that they're possibly, I believe I haven't had that answered yet. I believe Pam's going to ask that. Having a light at Mars Hill and now at that duly connector at fifty-three, I think a light should have been a long time ago and, um, at Malcolm Bridge and Race Church. I've seen enough sadness at that intersection. And many years ago, when I actually went to a a store there, uh, Bell Harbor that did remodeling, he actually had five blankets stacked beside his door. I never forgot that. So going forward, that is my biggest concern is what's going to happen with fifty-three and how this new project will impact that. I think all of you guys can understand that coming from the citizen, because I still feel that that whole north where we're at, all the subdivisions, we have to like try to get out there or go down to Hodges Mill and turn right on um, on, uh, the Parkway. My second concern quickly is the commercial, commercialization of Veterans Park. We've all been, you know, seeing Veterans Day. I have five of them in my family, veterans. And I'd like to know what this project's going to do as they go out. Are we going to see some type of reference to the Veterans Park, any type of signage, some type of deference to those people that either paid the ultimate sacrifice or are living or pass in Oconee County? I think something has to be done on that side if this goes through. I'd like to see that. I I think that the commercialization will actually make people forget that we have a, that we honor our Oconee fallen and military. And then lastly, I don't think this has come up yet, but I'm actually kind of predicting it for the commissioners and possibly you guys. But what's going to happen when it does come to fruition? And in the future, maybe five or 10 more years, and you start having issues where people start carrying all the uh, stuff from the restaurants over to the park. Is that going to eventually? And that I think should be considered either that will require a cleaning crew or staff for the park to clean it up. And with that, um, that's all I had to say. So it was just three concerns and they all hit me. And I want to be in favor because I love Oconee. I think it's very positive. And I'm a capitalist, but I still really want to see this county not grow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, she already introduced, hold on just a minute, Pam Hendricks signed up. So I'll call her up first and then I'll open it up to anybody else.
And, um, once again, I didn't know whether to sign up for or against. I'm not really against. I just came here to listen and try to understand about this project. I really have a lot of questions. Um, but my main concern is the park.
Let me get your address first.
I'm sorry, Pam Hendricks. I live at eleven fifty-one Thornwood Drive, Watkinsville. And I'm the current regent of the Reverend John Andrew Chapter, Daughters, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. We take a big interest in the Oconee, um, Veterans Memorial. Um, we got a big national grant to put the bronze eagle out at the front. We're working on a new phase of that memorial. It's very important. So a big concern of mine is if, is, is the Dooley Boulevard going to become the main entrance to the park? Is there any intent to close that entrance? Because I would hope not. I I think it's a really good thing for people to enter that park and ride by that memorial. Um, but it's also, you know, it requires sheriff's deputies every day to direct traffic in and out because there's one way in and out and it's very congested. Now we're going to add, so I I I had a few questions. Um, so is there going to be a traffic signal at Dooley Boulevard? Um, and will the, will the main entrance, where the current entrance be closed? Um, another thing, I think it would be best to get Dooley Boulevard completed. It's going to, you know, because it's going to connect, um, Highway fifty-three with the Oconee Connector, I believe, or Mars Hill. And if not, it is going to dump a lot of traffic out onto Highway fifty-three, and it's already very, very congested. Um, I was just wondering how many parking spaces there are. I, once again, I'm a bit concerned about the parking. And once again, will these people in this commercial area be spilling over and taking up parking in OVP? I'm wondering, is this going to be, since we're switching from residential to commercial, is it going to be on sewer and does the county have sewer capacity? Um, and then I I guess I was also wondering if there was an intent to fence. I would think that for security purposes, there's going to need to be a fence around the, um, storage units. Um, and I just wondered about that. And I still don't quite understand how the trail system has been designed to tie in with the OVP. Um, those are, I just have a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll go ahead and ask Abe if, whoa, oh, sorry. My bad. Oh. Okay. Understood, understood now. And that's why he wasn't signed up, but I I welcome you and I'm sorry. I almost forgot you.
Damagie, eleven, eleven twenty, Lockloman Circle, uh, regarding the highway business rezone, fifty-three is a road, is not a highway. Attractive self-storage. There's no such thing. There's plenty of available options for self-storage in Oconee. This is a high-traffic area. You have morning rush hour, afternoon rush hour. If you know the park, there's a third rush hour. If you've been there, there are hundreds of kids and families coming and going, football, baseball, softball, softball, tennis and soccer. You've been there, you have kids, if you know, you know. Very, very high-traffic area. The parent of a sixteen-year-old grew up in OVP, goes every day for soccer and other sports. This area is very, very highly congested. Think we have better options for this. Ask you, please do not approve.
All right. So I'll ask again, if there's anybody else that needs to speak in opposition. And at that point, I'll ask Abe if he wants to go ahead and address us real quick and then we'll close the public comment there.
Be glad to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, I think when you look at the overall project in terms of traffic, we are trying to help the congestion on the OVP and spread the traffic from this project and OVP through multiple entrances. Um, and one of those entrances is going to have a traffic signal, and that's the main Dooley Boulevard. And as as was looked at during the rezone of that, you know, park side. So in terms of, you know, the traffic, what we're generating in this project is really minimal compared to what we have in the area. But what we're trying to do is there's a lot of traffic at the park and me myself, I've been here over thirty years, um, on and off about forty years. So, um, just going off the collagen back. So I've seen growth. I've seen that happen. But duly connector and duly Boulevard are designed to carry traffic in those volumes. And that's why you have the duly connector is a four-lane roadway. It's not a single lane. It's four-lane. So it it's, so it's, it was meant, it was designed, it was looked at by the county very closely. And when we bring this traffic to it, it's really, we're not impacting this roadway. The traffic circles, we want to put another one on the connector as well to do the connector. If we can fit it physically and make it work with the buffers, we want that. We see it here. We see it throughout the county. We see it in other counties. Traffic circles do help keep moving that traffic and not have to stop. Uh, now, on the Dooley Boulevard, that's the other leg of Parkside, and that's another major roadway. There will be a traffic signal, but you cannot install a traffic signal, as y'all may have, may know, and Mr. Herring would tell you. You have to have traffic. You have to meet in the warrants for GDOT to be able to warrant installing a traffic signal. So please keep that in mind. Now, in terms of, you know, restaurants and whatnot, we we do not have any drive-throughs restaurants. We don't have fast food restaurants here. We have eliminated all that. We have excluded that on all those uses out of this rezone. And you do have that in front of you. Um, in terms of the parking, I know there were several questions about the parking. Uh, we have about three hundred and sixteen parking spaces, um, for those twelve lots that we talked about. The, you know, as far as the special use, the the self-storage facility, it'll have its own inside. But those are calculated based on the code and we do have more than required by code. What we really see is probably possibly some of the park, uh, patrons will come and park at this facility. You know, enjoy a cup of coffee and be able to see their kids, uh, practice or play. And so really, you know, they may be concerned that there'll be traffic going from this development to the park. But actually, it's, it's going to be the opposite. They're going to park at this facility and and hopefully take some of that load off the park. Uh, but then i- if you look at the number and the required, um, number of parking spaces, we have exceeded that. Uh, and and again, there's a balance where you could put so much, you're, you know, impacting the environment. So you you don't want to put so much that so much pavement out there not being used, but you want to put enough for the development by code, and that's what we've done. Um, and and I agree, rush hour is busy. It's busy everywhere. I mean, this is not something that we don't see. I I, like I said, forty years been in this area. Mister, Mister Butler used to plow that field over there behind the mule. So, you know, they want anything in the area, but it is growth. What you want to do is grow in the right way. You know, anybody could have put a big box there, but that's not the intent. We want to help that circulation. We want to invite pedestrian connectivity, and we want to keep it small scale. This is what we want. So don't look like a big, you know, retail center. It's more a smaller, you know, attractive development. And and I would have to disagree as far as the, um, with the gentleman about the self-storage. Uh, if it's all brick and it's it's hidden from you, from view to the extent possible with vegetations away from the traffic, away by buffers or means, you really, you're not going to see it. I mean, we're talking about anything against the R-two MPD and the park's going to be one-story. And we have a fifty-foot buffer right there. Anything on the roadway on the internal side, you're not going to see it unless you go on down Dooley Boulevard. And you're going to see probably part of the upper story. Uh, a good effective buffer, you'll see it along Grove Park on fifty-three. We planted that buffer. There's no buildings there, but you can't see hardly any of the buildings behind there. That's, that's a, you could see an example of a good buffer, and that's not even fifty-foot. That's twenty-five-foot length. Gentlemen, I'll be glad to answer, Mr. Chairman, any questions.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to close the public comments section and bring it up here to this table and ask you guys get your questions answered. Go first. In?
Mr. Herring. First of all, I want to compliment your staff for the quality, the information that you're providing for us. It's, it's very well done and I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Couple of questions. On the Unified Development Code, is there a table that requires so many parking spaces per square foot?
There is. Yes, sir. There are categories. It's divided into categories and they each have a, um, a, a, a new, a number of parking spaces required based on either square footage and the use.
And the, these all comply, I'm sure, in the design. Thank you. Another question that I have, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I know that or understand that the developer provided you with the building and facade materials. So if I may ask a technical question about it. I'm reading here that eighty percent of the, um, four-sided buildings with eighty percent brick, stone, masonry, you know, I believe the word is pronounced ethyss stucco. It's my understanding that ethyss is a synthetic polymer on top of a styrofoam laminate. Is that correct? As far as you know.
As far as I know, yes. I'm not, I don't know technically how it's made or how it's produced, but I'll go with that.
Okay. What I was getting at is that if we approve this as as presented, then we're allowing him up to eighty percent of this synthetic polymer on, um, on styrofoam laminate. And, um, so, but this was provided by the developer, you said, as far as his part of his narrative.
That's correct.
Very well. Thank you very much. Then that's all my question. Thank you, sir. Assuming that. Excuse me. Uh, can you hear me now? Okay. I'm assuming that under our code that we have signage requirements.
That's right.
And I guess my concern here is not that we're going to have a fast food, but we would have signage like a golden arch that you could see all the way into Veterans Park. Would the code allow them to do something like that?
Well, I don't know the size you're speaking of, but no, our, our sign ordinance is very, uh, very strict. And and it's based on size. It's based on the the number of the road frontage of each of the lots. So, um, I I would say, no, you're not going to see a, a, a number of signs like you may see in other communities.
So nothing overpowering that would take the focus on the parents watching games in Veterans Park. That it's looking at sign.
No, sir. And and all of our signs are monument-based, right? So so they're, and they're, they're limited to their total square footage, which would include that monument base. So you're not going to see an overly tall sign.
Uh, I have another question about the storage area. Will the storage aisle area permit trailers, RVs and?
No, sir. They're not proposing any outdoor storage with that.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, he's, um, just had a question about Georgia fifty-three. Isn't Georgia fifty-three in fact the state highway?
Yes.
Other question.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, uh, when does a traffic study get triggered?
It's based on trip counts generated by the development, and that would be at a thousand a day, a thousand eighty-two.
About ten percent under that.
That's right.
Yeah. Uh, and another question I had, and this might be for, for you or Abe, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I I was just wondering for semi-deliveries, truck deliveries, uh, if, if you could just kind of talk through how that would work, fifty-three coming in to make a delivery into one of these stores through this parking lot, internal parking lot, and then.
Mr. Herring, I'd be glad to answer that question. Um, so the way that the connector, that the duly connector and the Dooley Boulevard were installed and constructed, minus the topping on portion of it, is, you know, Highway fifty-three had to be improved. We had to widen the road. We had to put diesel lanes. We had to put center turn lanes. And that's to accommodate, you know, traffic as well as vehicular traffic, you know. So, so it was designed to take care of that. So as far as this particular project, you know, once you get on the duly connector, you know, you're going to turn into the development and then transport forward into the parking areas away from the traffic circle as you saw the parking lot. So, um, so as far as truck, it will be, you know, that that would be coming in to service those businesses. Um, and go back out to fifty-three. Uh, so proper diesel lanes, center turn lanes, they're already on fifty-three, um, you know, today.
I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the highway.
Okay.
Part of it. It's more, once they're into the development.
Okay, right.
So you had a fifty-three-foot truck with cab, uh, trying to service these businesses through this internal parking lot.
Sure.
Trying to envision that.
Okay, that's a good question. So really, the lanes we have done, they will accommodate the fire truck as well as. the fire truck as well as a tractor trailer to go through and make it around.
They'll make those turns there at the end.
Yes, sir. Yes, that's what we did.
Is that all you had, Chris?
Yeah, for right now.
Okay. Throw it back to Matt.
Um, Abe, how far will the, will the Dooley Connector road be built? If, if this is built first before all the houses and all the rest of the projects that they own is built out? How far will the road be built, the Dooley Connector road? Will it be to the end of that track?
Yes, sir. We will come.
But it's not just gonna stop at the roundabout to start with.
Right. I mean, it's got a binder right now. The rest of it's got a binder. It's just a topping layer, which we will definitely give that and possibly the circle all the way around to the other entrance. So that's, that's what we're looking for. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify about the architectural question that
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
So, please understand, when we say eighty percent this or this, it doesn't mean eighty percent gonna be one material. We, we listed several. As you saw in the architectural renderings, you know, we're looking at brick or stone, but with accents, you know, um, in terms of stucco or other materials. So we're not looking to put, you know, eighty percent stucco building out there. That's not the intent. So I just wanna make clear to you, and as far as the self-storage, it's a, it's all brick, all sides. So, and when we talk about, you know, the trim, you can't put brick on the trim. So we talk about the accents being something different. Just wanna clarify that, Mr. Jenkins.
Abe, while we're on the subject of the um, uh, storage, is there gonna be a perimeter fence to the storage section?
The fence? Yes, sir. It would be.
That was another question that was out there floating. Anybody else?
You sit down? Yeah.
Chris.
What is, and, and I apologize, it's probably in here, and I think I remember reading it, but.
It's easier to ask. No problem.
The heights.
Yes, sir.
But especially the, to the, to the lady that, I forget her name, Pam maybe, uh, asked, had, had a concern, and I share the concern. I have family that's veterans. My son's in the service now. Uh, what's the size, the heights?
Of which?
Especially the ones near the entrance, these buildings near the entrance.
Yeah, on this side or which side you're talking about?
Or Todd Mountain Road.
Oh, towards here.
Closest to OVP.
I mean, those gonna be mainly one-story, the two-story max, but, you know, that's what you're looking at for the whole development there, one to two max. We're not looking any more than that. So, and again, with the square footage, you know, we're limited to how much you could do that. Yes, sir.
If I'm looking at this correctly, the park connector road, that shows it going across the walk.
Okay, you talked about, I, I did not hear you. I'm sorry.
The park connector r- road, does that show, it shows it goes across the walking path into the park?
Yes, sir, but we are redoing the path. It does go across. You will have a crossing. So the path will connect and go across it. So you'll have a crossing, proper crossing.
Thanks.
I have one other question, Abe. During the construction phase, the um, walking path there, so there will be some relocation. Put that connector road in there. Will that walking path be maintained so that walkers, because that, as a lot of people who use that trail, will be able to continue to use it?
So, you, you talk about the main ten-foot multi-use path, is that what you?
I'm talking about the trail in Veterans Park.
The trail, yes.
Where the road comes across that?
Yes.
Other words, that trail will be, will be maintained so that people will continue to be able to use it while you're building that road?
Of course, of course. Yes, sir. I believe. Commissioner Jordan?
Yes, I've got a few questions, Abe. Uh, and I wanna say We got you all. Am I on now? I'm sorry, I thought I hit a second ago. Um, the department has done a great job. You've done a great job in terms of what you've said here. I am concerned with a few things, and uh, so I will attempt to uh, run through that quickly. First, the, uh, the access to OVP Park and, and drive. Will there be any contingency for uh, any new plannings or landscape material around that entranceway? If I could ask that, what's, what's the plan there? I know from the guy from, from the county standpoint, county standpoint, that, that interconnection would have some sort of a planning that required uh, planning, you know, uh, allowance once that goes in. But is there anything that is there gonna be a combination of, of it going in at the same time, or we don't really know?
If your question is, will they be required to do landscaping? Yes, they will.
No, that's, that's not the question. This currently, the site itself stubs out for that, but they do not continue that street all the way to the cross street in OVP. The developer does not do that. So this is a stub, that's correct?
Right.
Okay. And I'm just trying to ask what the requirements are in terms of matching up when that comes about.
The, the county will manage that.
So, um, and, you know, in that, in that light, uh, I think the, the whole project is uh, for the most part, you know, landscaping and how it's done is, is quite well. Uh, the property that is immediately north of the site, uh, that's uh, previously residential as part of the site. Um, um, that's, uh, I didn't see it on the plan exactly what I was noting. Um, is there any, a, a location where uh, there's any anticipation of, of adding an additional connection to OVP Park from potentially a site, any sites north? Uh.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Not to your knowledge. I would like to ask that in just a moment to the uh, engineer. Uh, if there are not any plans to do so, I know there's a fifty-foot buffer there. But when, we all know when the winter time comes and all these get, you know, uh, knocked out of trees and so forth, it's uh, you can see a whole lot in a, in a wide open spot there. So, I would uh, suggest, and I would make a recommendation in a moment that we uh, continue uh, the buffer that's uh, on the uh, main part of Dooley uh, connector around that site in terms of uh, uh, the storage facilities, that, that planning buffer or some portion, e- even if it's a limited uh, hedgerow uh, or uh, you know, fencing of some sort that's taught that to, to block things. And then I'll also make a recommendation, as it was brought up earlier on, any dumpsters in the site rather than be be uh, have fencing, which is required, which is in the plan so far, that that be brick, brick or stone.
That's a code requirement.
Is it? Okay, so matching with it, okay. Cause I didn't catch that. Um, go ahead. You go ahead.
I have one. Is there any written comment that I might have missed from the Recreation Department regarding this?
One clarification, there was a couple of comments about fast food, and I don't see it excluded specifically in the documentation. Is it excluded in the uh, R two or the B two?
No, B two would allow that, but the applicant has stated tonight that those are not uses that they would pursue.
But it's not officially designated and?
That's right.
That brings up an, I had noticed in uh, in reading the um, the, the developer's uh, information that he had prepared, and of course, the county uh, prepared their narrative. Uh, there seemed to be a little bit of discrepancy in regards to uh, uh, the sentencing, I thought. Uh, I think it was on the actual uh, our, our stuff, you know, uh, that, that was a little, little bit off, and I can't remember exactly what that, how that verbiage, verbiage was. But uh, I wanted, I just, you know, let's look at that and uh, and I, well, making note of that in a moment, but uh, and I think right now, I think we're good.
Yes.
Got a buffer that Al, Al has proposed. It's evergreen oak made.
That's right. Yes, sir.
And, and uh, submitted architecture, which there's been a lot of comments about fast food stuff. Making submitted architecture trunks our rules, and since he hasn't provided any.
That's right. Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
All right, one more. Lisa Lett.
Who do you wanna address it to?
The, the guy. Uh, back to the traffic study. I, I'm real, so Yogi Bear saying that nobody goes in there anymore. It's too busy, too, too popular. I don't go to OVP anymore because it's crazy at the wrong time. Uh, so I, I think that there's a lot of questions murmuring under here about the, in the, in the, those that spoke and myself about traffic on that intersection along with OVP being so close together right there. So, um, can a traffic study be requested even though ethically it's not at a thousand?
You, well, you certainly can.
Numbers. I'm an engineer.
Yeah, you certainly can add that as a condition, but remember, one of our conditions was that they provide a roundabout along Dooley or equivalent, and that will, that will require an engineering study to be done to determine
All the way to fifty-three?
At, at Dooley and, and the new connector to OVP, right?
I'm concerned his cars at fifty.
Right, at Dooley and fifty-three, there's already a signal planned for that location
Then I.
Through, through the Parkside rezone, right? And as well as the other location if
Myopolic.
That, that's okay. That's, yeah. And so there, there's roughly seven hundred homes, not a thousand, seven hundred in that development.
And I would.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yes.
All right, this is where I do the auctioneer thing. Any more questions? Go in once. Uh, I don't see anybody ask anymore, so now I have heard from all the questions that there may be some motions that have some additions. So I'll ask, who wants to go first with a motion in any direction?
I'll make a motion. Uh, the motion would be that uh, to approve with these additional conditions. Uh, one being the uh, landing along the north side of the properties we discussed, that it matched the uh, portion of uh, Dooley Connector uh, and turn that corner and run along the east-west uh, property line. Uh, to make sure that if we have a residential uh, property right there next to it, that there's gonna be at least as much uh, maintain, you know, buffer as there is to the streetway. So, uh,
Gavin, I'll point out, I'll, I'll interrupt for a second. It's actually greater at the top of the project than it is at the street side.
No, it's a, it's an un, it's a fifty-foot, it's fifty-foot un, unimproved, is, am I correct? Whatever is there is to stay.
Yeah, can you give me the map? Let, let's, let's clarify your just, what you just got. Can you zoom into that northern property line, please? Is this what you're referring to?
Yes, yes, that's whatever, whatever.
So, this is a fifty-foot natural buffer strip that is on the R two MPD side. So this is required around any MPD fifty-foot undisturbed.
I understand. I understand.
This will be there no matter what.
The, the property uh, uh, to the north and in fact to the, to the east and so forth is all the same property owner, am I correct?
Same property owner, yes.
Uh, the, I don't have a problem with that buffer if, if we're, we've got a, a buffer, like I say, over to Dooley Connector, that, that, that not be included on the adjacent property in some form of easement uh, configured, configured to make that happen.
It's, it's a condition of zoning, so it will be required.
So it is required that a planting buffer will be.
An undisturbed buffer is required at this location on the R two.
Understand, understand, but an undisturbed buffer of primarily oaks and of the like is, is a completely wide-open screen. There's nothing, you know, at, at, that's four months out of the year. It's wide open.
Getting back to your motion, you wanna make a motion with the conditions, but make that condition a opaque, evergreen?
That's correct. With a, with a, with a uh, caveat that it, it, it be, it could be on the other property handled by easements if, if they could do that or?
Right, it, it, it can't be on the other property because that is the MPD buffer, which is required to be an undisturbed.
And I would, then I would suggest uh, uh, to the engineering uh, that they propose a uh, a fencing material as a buffer or uh, something, something along that, along that area that's high enough to, uh, to buffer. You know, those, those buildings are, the backs of those are gonna be that area that's the twenty percent not brick. All the, all the brick will, will go to the face road areas where it's gonna look nice.
No, it, it's all four-sides brick.
It's all solid, all?
That's one of our conditions.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought it was eighty percent. Okay, it's all bricks there. Okay. All right.
So, what's the shape of your motion now? Do we?
Yeah, I, you know, I uh, I, my, let me back up here and I'll say that I would uh, vote to approve with a condition that uh, some sort of fencing, um, solid fencing or something like uh, be along that northwest.
So he's required to do a fence. You're saying you want the fence to be of an opaque?
Yes.
Sorry, there's already a fence.
Uh, yeah, but he could say an opaque fence, much like you had to do at your, your facility. That's, that's what I'm saying is the.
I think that's what's proposed.
Is that, go ahead, Abe. Go ahead and.
I just wanna understand, really, we're talking about the northern park property line along that fifty-foot buffer.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what we would like to do is do it with vegetation, you know, evergreens, like typically we have done. But, I mean, if you wanted the opaque fence, really, we could do that too. But we can't, we shouldn't be required to do both. I mean, opaque.
In, in the opaque fence already exists.
Uh, on, on the upper side, majority of it is, is pretty thick. But we will, like I said before, augment and add evergreens to make an opaque buffer. That's just like we have proposed on that east side.
Right. If there were pretty oak trees now, they'd have to be cut down and then evergreens planted. They don't grow under oak. So we gotta make a decision. Do you wanna get rid of the oak trees, or do you want evergreens? Cause you can't have both.
That's right.
Currently, the setback, the setback to the pavement herb area at the, at the upper end of the property, what would that be from the property line?
Uh, so, so the opaque requirements with the county, you can plant a buffer and twenty-five foot wide. That's a planted buffer. You could, you know, implement the fence and some shrubs, or you could do just evergreens, okay? But when you do that, you gotta take old growth out because they can't grow under trees. So please understand. So what we have done before, and it's been successful, where we have gaps, uh, we fill in with evergreens, but we don't wanna take old growth out. That's not really the intent, and we're talk, we're talking about one-story buildings here that's all brick. We're not talking about, you know, thirty-foot.
I understand, but, I understand, but if, if I were to have a home that was next to that property line, I would not be willing to look into what appears to be the backside of a, of a commercial building.
Right.
And, and that side will not have any, you know, I would imagine won't have decorative uh, so, items to, to, to look at along this long side of that building.
All right, so I'm gonna get us back to business here. Thank you, Abe. Um, you have a motion to approve with all of the conditions that are already on the book, but do you wanna change the fence or the planting?
Uh, either or is fine, as long as, as long as it's stipulated that it will provide at least.
When we say either or, we're, either or, an opaque fence.
Yeah.
Okay, opaque. Well, as, as we just decided, we're going to do opaque buffer and then let them work it out with the.
That's fine.
At the actual permitting. So opaque buffer on the north portion towards the MP three. All right.
Right.
So any other?
Oh, my final thought is there was, there was a concern amongst uh, one of the people that spoke about uh, being brick around the uh, dumpster areas. Typically is it listed as an opaque uh, requirement as well, either? It around, it is, okay.
All right. So I have a motion to approve with the staff's conditions with the addition of an opaque buffer uh, on the side of the storage. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, uh, um, would like to ask if uh, the motion maker would agree to two other stipulations. May I do that and be in order? Uh, one is if he would accept that um, EFS not be allowed as a veneer except as an accent. That would be stipulation number eight. And then also, under the exclusions, there would be a tenth one, and that is that fast food restaurants would be excluded. If you would accept those, then I'll.
I'll accept that, yeah.
Then I, with that, I would make the.
So Gavin has made a proposal to approve with the conditions addition to the opaque buffer of uh, condition number. It's, it's on a special use actually. Uh, but on the uh, brick or the brick and stone veneers, we're going to rule out the EFS product and then we're going to add to number seven condition number ten or uh, exclusion number ten, no fast food.
Uh, just to be clear, the EFS would be on, allowed only as an accent. Yes.
Can I also ask? Clarification of the fast food, uh, changing that definition. From just fast food to fast food with drive-through windows.
That's already.
That's already been.
Yeah. So the question is, how do you define fast?
Yes, true.
You know, um, you can theoretically find a coffee shop fast food. But I, I think the definition of fast, fast food with drive-through is, is the, is what we want. We want to be able to promote restaurants, small, business people who are promoting coffee shops, ice cream shops, those types.
So, all right, getting back. So Gavin, it's your motion so far and he wants to add instead of no fast food for number ten, he wants no drive-throughs for number ten.
I, let me add a couple real quick so you don't have to repeat yourself and say it again. Uh. I noticed in the plan also in regards to fast food, there's also a, a notation there at one point where it says no convenience store with pumps. It however does, it seems to appear that it has left the convenience store option as a, uh, an open-ended scenario there. I would be concerned with that. And then Abe, is there, is, is there a limit on the number of units subdivided within each of these buildings? For example, typically you said it'd be a fifty by a hundred or whatever, roughly five thousand to six thousand square feet is what I understood.
I mean, you're going to probably have two to three, maybe four.
So for example, you could divide that into four units, you know, and uh, that's a sizable amount of retail or whatever. I think the requirements for parking, would that not change, uh, Guy, if we were considering those units to have more?
It's based on square footage.
Retail. Uh, they, they would, from the retail standpoint.
It, it's based on the square footage, so it would not.
Okay.
Oh, no. All right. Um, let, let me rephrase.
For how you want me to do it.
Let me rephrase the motion. And let's see if we need to add anything. So we have Gavin's motion to approve with all of the staff's conditions. An opaque buffer adding to the buffer on the storage facility. The EFS used as accent only. And the no drive-through. Pretty good. Is that?
Fast food restaurant with drive-through, I think is the way we wanted to phrase that.
No fast food.
Fast food restaurant.
Fast food with drive.
As well, no uh, convenience store.
So we need to do a number eleven for no convenience or was no convenience?
Go with that same.
These are additions. Wait a minute, wait. These were additions to what was already approved at the original um, subdividing of this and changing. Were convenience stores allowed back then? Okay. So we want to add addition number eleven, no convenience stores?
Yes, it'll be fine.
Like fast foods, we get into the argument of what's a convenience store.
That sounds, that sounds perfect.
Okay. All right. Now, given all that, Matt, do you still need to add something?
I do.
Okay. What do you propose?
Since we are um, not letting him do the twenty percent uh, EFS, I propose we let him do some kind of, I would call it hardy concrete siding in his needs. Since he's going to be eighty percent brick, that's how most of America is built today. Now, propose that we don't hamstring him.
You don't really.
Using EFS and twenty percent let him use hardy or a concrete base siding product. Not, I don't know what else to call that.
Right. Just here to serve. Um. So on the storage building, and I put, put that one away, um. Uh, siding can be brick primarily and rock, but if they want accent with hardy board or EFS, they, they do so, right? Hopefully somebody has that dictated. All right. So with that, I still need a second.
About a second.
Jim wants the second, although it has been changed, Jim, so I had to ask for a second again. All right. So here we go. We have a first and a second to approve with all of the staff's conditions, adding in that the buffer around the storage facility and the north uh, portion should be more opaque. And that the storage facilities brick or rock face may be accented by EFS or hardy board only.
Mr. Chairman, we're on the rezone, not, not.
Yes, the special use. You're right. We'll save that one.
I believe that motion was for the rezone and the building material for the rezone, not for the self-storage.
Okay. Okay. That means for zoning two oh four, we are looking at motion to approve with conditions that require there be staff's condition, seven conditions and the nine exclusions, adding no fast food with drive-through. Or condition number eleven, no convenience stores. And that should be that for that one.
Uh, that, that sounds good to me. Uh, uh, the only question, I, I, one thing came up, uh, Guy. Is this, it regards to this variance, is this, is this going to automatically amend the, the uh, uh, mix the PUD uh, in terms of the overall, is it, is it, you know, like a lot of times when we, when we amend something that in regards to a PUD, it affects the, or potentially the balance of the project?
No.
So that, at this point, it is not an, there is no addendum to.
Right. The, the sliver along duly is being removed from the PUD and added to this reason.
Perfect.
And Mr. Chairman, just want to make sure that uh, Mr. Jenkins' motion was in that as well.
Well, the accent still applies to the storage facility.
No, the, the accent is for the rezone.
Yeah, it is not affecting, no.
All brick.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify that it's not that I'm asking he use EFS, is that I would rather it be used allowed only as an accent, allowed, not required. Just to be sure that I've reverted that. Correct. Yeah, allowed, but not required.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that does regard just the retail portion. That is not in regard to the self-storage.
Six does have to have that. I got it now. All right. Let me rephrase it one more time. We have an approval or a uh, motion to approve by Gavin and Jim. It is to approve with conditions as per the staff, but the number six. Yeah, number six will allow EFS as accent only and or hardy board as accent. So far, so good. Then condition seven would be the nine exclusions already uh, recommended by staff. But the additional uh, exclusions, no fast food with uh, drive-through and condition number eleven, no convenience stores. Now have I captured?
Mr. Chairman, let me correct this again, please. I'm, I apologize for the confusion. Number six has any self-storage building shall be brick or veneer. That is not what I was referring to. The self-storage should, number six, self-storage, brick or vene, brick or uh, stone veneer needs to stay intact. This would have to do with the retail, the re, the rezoning portion only, where he had said in his narrative that he would do brick, stone. Uh, and we were allowing that in the retail portion, not in the self-storage portion. So I don't want to confuse this and make it worse. So if you want to make this as a condition number eight, let's separate it from number six.
Actually. It's the.
Yes, that would be agreeable as a part of number one. Yes.
It would be an additional condition.
Condition number eight. So it's any structure.
Retail structure, please.
Okay, retail structures. Per UDC with the exception that EFS only used as an accent.
Only as an accent.
Now, do I have it captured?
We have according to that.
Oh, and or party, okay. All right. So we have motion to approve. First and a second, eight conditions. Um. The staff's first six conditions unchanged. Addition number seven has two additional exclusions. Number ten, no fast food with drive-through. Number eleven, no convenience stores. And then condition number eight has been added, that the retail buildings per UDC with the exception that EFS can only be used as an accent. And hardy board could be substituted for some of those accents.
Yes.
All right. So with that motion and second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. I have one, two, three, five. Anyone opposed, please raise your right hand at this. It passes five to three. And uh, we'll now move to two oh three, which does have the special use of the storage building. So we've described how the storage buildings look. How do we want to make a motion? We'll need a motion, approve or deny?
I'll make a motion we approve. P two, three, oh, two, oh, four, with staff conditions.
With staff conditions as written, I mean, oh, three. Two oh three, yeah. All right. So Matt is.
Yeah, two oh three, I'm.
Condition to approve. Um, Guy, if we put some issues that overlap, do I have to restate them or just? So this is approved, the special use for the storage facility. Matt has given us a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Gavin has seconded for approval with staff's conditions. If you are in favor, please raise your right hand. Have the same five. And those that oppose, please raise your right hand. And three, okay? All right. Those two have been completed. Last guy to come and present us the next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, your next case is P twenty-three zero two four three. This is uh, from the city of Bogart. This is a council initiated rezone to remove development conditions that were inadvertently placed on a rezone of Gateway East um, back in two thousand and three, I believe it was. Uh, this is parcel B zero one U zero zero two and B zero one U zero zero three. They're currently zoned TB in the workplace center character area. And again, the city is initiating a rezone, a modification of the January eighth, two thousand and one city of Bogart rezone to technology business district resolution for the Soggy property to remove the development guidelines from the two thousand and one rezone resolution. These development guidelines were set, set aside for the industrial park for both the east and west. Um, the west portion is in the county. It was not included as develop, as a zoning condition. The city added it as a zoning condition in their, uh, their rezone. So this is to remove those development guidelines and let the industrial park manage those covenants. And of course, staff recommends approval of the city's request. Thank you.
All right. So it looks like. Okay. Bumble fingers here. I'll ask the uh, applicants representative to come up. No, nobody's here. And I don't have anybody signed up to talk in favor of it. I'll ask. All right. Anybody wants, I'll close that portion. Ask if anybody wants to speak in opposition.
Everybody's.
All right. So now I'll close the public portion of zero two three, uh, two, four, three and bring it up here. Ask if you guys have any other questions.
Yeah, I've got a question. Uh, uh. There was a mention there in the narrative that uh, it was understood that city of Bogart uh, their require, their requirements is based on the two thousand approved plan. And con, uh, conversations recently, that it would uh, uh, not affect city of Bogart in any negative, negative way. Um. Do you have any, any of that in writing from, from our existing city council yet? Do you have anything to back up the, the statement in the narrative that said that?
Um, I do not, not from the city council, but the city council will vote on this, so they'll make that determination.
Yeah.
But it is a request from the city to carry out this reason.
I know we've had previously councils that have voted on these aspects before. So I'm just trying to get that in there for future conversation.
All right. Any other questions or comments? So. What, what's going to?
I would like to, to uh, communicate, communicate what I desire, um, considering the fact that I am the representative for Bogart. Uh. The property in question, if you can, can you pull up the master uh, overlay that uh, that shows the entire property and properties to the north and west of the site? that, uh, that shows the entire property and properties to the north and west of the site? That doesn't show it completely, but everything to the, uh, everything to the west of the, of the actual location site is, is currently all the way to, uh, the end of and to the next intersection at, the name of the road wheel.
Like no creeping.
No, it's the other way. No, it's, it's, yeah, that was mill. Uh, that's all concurrently now, uh, owned by the same property owners, that could, does that connect, right, Guy?
This last piece.
Question, I'm sorry.
Uh, we, we previously, the piece to the left, we've already amended that in our last meeting, correct?
This portion, the rear portion was rezoned, yes.
That's right, on that piece to the left. And it is, uh, it is now owned by Mr. Oom, the same folks that own everything to the west of that, correct?
No, sir.
It is not?
No.
Okay. I had, was understanding that he had actually, okay, so there is a piece there between this and the other. Uh, this particular piece, uh, does Mr. Own, own that or representative or entity?
Uh, I'm not sure of the owner off the top of my head, yes.
I have, I have a tremendous amount of respect for what Mr. Oom has brought to Bogart and, uh, uh, in fact, if he's not the owner, then I'm, I'm just, uh, connecting the dots here. He owns a considerable amount of property west of, of those two pieces there that run from three sixteen back to level one twenty-nine. And it's, it's, it's in, in a, it would be similar to, not as much, but the probably, the project that we just worked on that's some seven, eight hundred lot subdivision. Since Bogart has not had the opportunity to, I don't want to waste the, the developer's time, but I would, I would like for this not to be approved such that the, uh, the develops of those sites, as we look at the, uh, the DLC requirements of the new intersection, that it be, uh, that we have an opportunity to meet our city council and those property owners and discuss the entirety before we start approving, any rezones. Okay, removal from the existing requirement of, of business and or commercial.
So I'll jump ahead and ask, are you wanting to make a motion to?
Well, I, I wanted to open it back up if there's any questions.
Right.
See if anybody.
Still ask for discussion on that motion, obviously, as we did the last time, so you want to start a motion or?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and make the most of it. It's, uh, denied based on, uh, what I had said, which is, as short is, is that, that we've got multiple large tracts contiguous that, uh, the development of, if not planned accordingly, would, could make a massive.
Okay, for the interest of time, we'll go ahead and pause there for a second. Do I have a second to the nominee, or the motion to decline this?
Yeah, just, just make that with, with impact study, uh, and or meetings, and or meetings with the city council.
So you want to change your motion with the recommendation that there be an impact study and make it a, approve, a conditional approval?
And or initial meetings with, uh.
So we're going to change the motion to approve with the condition.
Not to approve.
But we still have a motion to deny, I need a second for that motion. Alright, Gavin, that motion has failed because we can't get a second. So do you, I'll give you first dibs on the counter motion.
Okay, uh.
As I alluded to, you could make a motion to approve as long as there was a condition that there be an impact study done. That's about the limit of our power.
I'll go ahead with, with a motion. The question first, this, this in terms of the change will set a precedence in regards to pulling a site out of the, the Gateway commercial development.
No, no, sir. No, sir.
This is not pulling it out?
Not the first.
Okay, but it is. There, this rezoned is part of Gateway East and will remain such. You're removing the condition on the rezon, which is the development guidelines that were covenants with the park.
We're removing the, what is, say that one more time.
We're removing the covenants.
Okay.
They were attached, uh, as a condition of rezon.
Perhaps, Guy, if we were replacing them with UDC type government, aren't we?
No, sir. These are covenants that were for the industrial park.
Not replacing them with anything.
That were to be managed, just like any other owners' associations management. They are the guidelines that the owners have decided would be in that gateway park. In the county portion, it was not attached to a rezon such that the county staff would administer those covenants. The city portion, it was attached as conditions, and that would require staff to manage those conditions. Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to be sure, this is not a typo, applicant name on the applications Bogart City Council.
That's right, it is. The, the city is requesting for this to be removed from that condition.
And the reason they are is we have the staff to manage it.
The, the reason is. That, that's right, if, if, yeah, we would have to manage those covenants.
Just for clarity.
That's right, yes.
Gotcha.
In search of a motion. We've had the denial, uh, has failed, so I'm looking for a motion of approval, but go ahead.
I make a motion to approve.
Do you want us, so Gavin, you, you're not going to be a part of that? Okay, so Stephen has taken a motion to approve with, there were no conditions, so to approve, do I have a second? Mike is going to second that, and I'll ask now if you're approval, please raise your right hand. And then if you disapprove, raise your right hand. Okay, so, got it. So we're going to send that up to Bogart, let them do some more discussion on that. So, Mr. Guy, I'll ask you to come back for the next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, your next case is P twenty-three, zero, two, three, one. Uh, Mark Thomas owner. This is a portion of C zero, six, zero, two, four, C, uh, that's a special use, uh, P twenty-three, zero, two, three, one, uh, for a cell tower just off of Cedar Road. It is currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation, uh, character area. And again, this was previously approved, uh, special use six, five, four, five in two thousand and fourteen for a telecommunications tower that would not exceed a hundred and fifty feet. The applicant is requesting, uh, a change in that condition, uh, to not, uh, to allow the tower to go up to one ninety-nine, to not exceed a hundred and ninety-nine feet. Uh, staff recommends conditional approval with our standard one condition, number two, telecommunications tower shall not be taller than a hundred and ninety-nine feet in height. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant's representative here?
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thought there wasn't anybody here.
There you go. I am here, John Benke, uh, Prime Tower Development, eleven sixty-four Brookfield, Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my presentation is brief. We're just looking for two things, we want to extend the height forty-five feet with the lightning, lightning rod, that ends up being forty-nine feet. And then, uh, when we came back to look at the site, we shifted it a little bit from where it was so that we got more elevation to make the tower more effective.
Got you. Alright, we'll call you back up if there's any questions that arise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I didn't have anybody sign up for or against, so I'll just ask the audience if there's anybody who wants to speak on this subject. Alright, I don't see anybody rushing the podium, so I'm going to close the public portion, bring it up here to you guys. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant or Mr. Herring?
Question from Mr. Herring. Not well-versed in towers and our ordinances, so my one question is like, for example, the tower behind Bales, what prevents that tower from being raised westward made another fifty, seventy, five, hundred feet?
They would, they would have to come before council, I mean, the planning commission and the board of commissioners.
I don't know if there was an ordinance, tower height per section of the county, developed areas.
No, that's right, no.
Alright, any, any other questions need to be addressed? Right then, jumping ahead and asking, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with, with stipulation that, that are conditions of.
Conditions?
Staff.
I'll second that motion.
Stephen?
Same.
Alright, so I have motion to approve with the staff's conditions. Please raise your right hand if you. It's unanimous. So that takes care of the different applications, we have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of. Another few things, it is a public portion, while I invite you to stay as we address the UDC codes, go ahead, Mr. Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have the staff memorandum and attachments in your application packets. Uh, I'll go over those briefly. Uh, in article three, we're proposing to change the allowable lot size for accessory structures uh, from a minimum of ten acre, in the front yard, sorry, from accessory structures in the front yard, uh, from ten acres to five. That is, uh, section three, five, one, zero, two. Uh, so you'll notice in guest house, uh, we're currently restricting guest house to the rear, um, or to the side. And so it, sometimes they're proposed to be in the front yard in these larger lots, uh, so if you have a five-acre lot, um, and it, it could potentially fit better if you're off of the driveway in the front. We're seeing a lot of variances to that effect, so we're suggesting that we go from a ten, uh, minimum acre lot size down to a five in order to allow those, um, in the, the side or, uh, a front yard. Uh, so that's a number one. Uh, number two, again, it's the same, uh, situation with garage apartments, uh, for lots less than five acres in size. Um, so anything over that, uh, could be placed in the front yard. Uh, number three, uh, this is where we're addressing the central mailbox units, so these are federal requirements uh, that, uh, are more, better spelled out with this proposed language. Uh, these are federal guidelines that were required to, uh, administer on their behalf, and, um, and that is the change to the, the CBUs, uh, as, as you're probably aware, any new subdivisions have to have a, essentially a box, um, similar to an apartment complex. You can't have your own, your mail delivered to your driveway, uh, any longer. Uh, four and, and five, these are, uh, adjusting the parking requirements. So right now we have a maximum number of parking spaces, that's a hundred and ten percent of the minimum. Uh, we are proposing to do away with that. Uh, we found that the, uh, there's quite a few variances that are coming forward because of that, and, uh, there was, the, the hundred and ten percent, it was, was, uh, a little bit, um, is, is not appropriate for, uh, for the uses that are, um, listed in our, our table and our, uh, in the UDC for parking space requirements. Uh, number six, uh, again, this is the minimum, uh, number of spaces is required, there is, uh, no maximum cap on those. Uh, number seven, uh, mural signs, we did not have a definition in our sign ordinance for murals. Uh, you'll see that mural sign is a work of art either painted or otherwise directly applied on a building's wall or facade. Additionally, a mural is a large picture image which is painted, constructed or affixed directly onto a vertical building wall. And we have, uh, abandoned those along with painted signs. So number nine would, would show the change, uh, under attached and painted signs which are prohibited, and that includes mural signs and murals. Number ten, uh, we changed, uh, the one per entryway, um, as opposed to one per tenant under, uh, under our awning signs. So these are the signs that are typically found under an awning, under a, a, a covered area in front of a doorway. Um, some tenants may have two entrances, if you're a, a corner unit and in-unit, and so we've changed this to go from one per tenant to one per entryway per tenant. And then, uh, you'll see down at the bottom, uh, we've also added or where visible on adjacent roadway, road frontage and drive aisles. So this is where a tenant can have an additional sign, so you have one sign per tenant per road frontage. If it's visible from either a drive aisle or from a, or from a road on another side of the building, they would be allowed to have a sign there as well. It still has to meet our size requirements for our sign ordinance. That, that still is the same, so the size of the sign cannot change, but it would allow them additional sign, uh, if visible from an adjacent roadway. And number eleven, allowing private streets in AG, uh, this was, uh, not previously allowed. And that is all of the, uh, proposed text amendments, I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. So we are at that portion where you guys, if you have any questions, need to ask them now because I'll be looking for a motion here shortly. I, just to lighten it up a little bit, you, Mike, you noticed that those additional signs that he permitted are not for those little buildings that were in that last. So it, it doesn't allow that particular type project to have a bunch of signs. It's only big, so, alright. Any other questions, clarifications necessary? With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve, or motion to deny. These are usually.
Motion to approve the.
There you go.
Recommendation.
I'll second.
So Chris and Matt have started the ball, and if you are in favor of approving these for staff to add to the UDCs, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. We have one more motion and vote. I need a motion to adjourn. Nick, do I have a second? Alright, Mike, and we're going to use our legs to vote, if you're against it, but stay here. Remember that in December we have, um, uh, an unusual month, so we have the meeting a week early like this month. So please include us in plans.